Regarding a proposed ethics code for the city of Brownsville.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the commission. Mr. Mayor, when you first came into office, I think we met within a day or two, and your first instruction to me was to explore what steps the city commission might take to reinstitute an ethics code. You asked me to look at the former ethics code that the city had and had expired, and you also asked me to look at ethics codes of other cities, model ethics codes, and to see where, what was the most effective way or meaningful way the city of Brownsville government might be able to ensure a high ethical standard among the governmental body here and also among city employees. I prepared a short PowerPoint because I really think this workshop is going to be more of the introduction to an effort that will probably take place over the next several weeks with the result of being an ethics code that the city can be proud of. Can I get the, where's the button for the? Which one? This one? First of all, I think we have to say very simplistically, what are ethics? Webster Dictionary defines it as a discipline dealing with good and evil and with a moral duty, moral principles or practice. In other words, ethics simply refers to good moral conduct owed toward others. And really what we're talking about is the covenant that this governmental body has with the public as a whole and the trust that the public has in city government. First of all, the public deserves a government that's open, honest, and transparent. Municipal codes are specifically written to address situations which are more specific to cities. We have state laws which we'll go into in a little bit, and which some of those state laws govern ethical conduct by governmental officials, including city officials. But the purpose of a municipal code is we can delve into specific situations that a governmental entity, a city, deals with. For example, representations of private interests, conflicting outside employment, use of city property for private purposes, use of city property for political activity, prohibited interests in contracts, direct or indirect interest, gifts, meals, et cetera. And these are, ethics codes, it's not just a matter of, you know, a list of things you can't do. I mean, I look at them in terms of something that's helpful. They provide a guideline path for the commission and for elected officials and for other public officials so public officials can understand what kind of conduct is permitted and which kind of conduct should not. It can also provide situations where if we're, and sometimes they can unintentionally arise, where we're in a predicament, where we're suddenly in a situation, what do we do? How do we deal with that? Sometimes there's manners of disclosure and recusal. In other words, I can disclose, say, hey, there's a, I have an interest in this matter that's coming before me, and therefore I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote, or perhaps I can file a financial disclosure which will cure that. There's different ways we can deal with different ethical situations that arise. And ethical situations are something that can arise in the normal day-to-day activity of business or government. I mean, there's nothing that's necessarily bad, it's how we choose to deal with them, how we choose to take the high road is what's required. And finally, ethics codes provides for a means of enforcement. You know, if someone does commit an intentional violation of the ethics code for their own personal self-gain, how will the city go about enforcing the rules that it has adopted itself? A little bit of background, the city of Brownsville did have an ethics code, and it's in the material, the binder that I provided to you. It was adopted in 2001, and it was based on codes of ethics that had been adopted by San Antonio and Dallas. It was written to automatically expire on July 25, 2005 unless reenacted with or without amendment by the city commission. What happened is that it rolled, that date rolled around, and nobody voted to reactivate or to extend the Brownsville code that existed with or without amendment, and therefore it naturally expired because the statute, the ordinance which adopted it had a natural expiration date. So the Brownsville Code of Ethics that we did have, which was based on the San Antonio Code, expired on July 5, 2001 because the city commission at that time didn't adopt it, and I don't know the reasons for that. Okay? Then the question becomes, in the absence of a municipal code, what ethics rules do we have right now or are in effect right now that govern conduct by the commission? First, we have disclosure requirements. The disclosure requirements can be broken down into two different categories. You've got general disclosure, which are, you know, the financial statements that you file, and then there's transactional disclosure in the interest that, in case someone has a substantial economic interest in a business or something like that, there's certain forms that they can file with the city secretary. Also, in the Texas Local Government Code, Section 141-004, there's a section dealing with affidavit and abstention from voting required, but that statute is tied to the existence of what they call substantial interests, which brings us to, we'll get back to that in a bit. The Texas, the city of Brownsville Ethics Code, the way it formerly was, we had a procedure for enforcement, and this was the procedure. I just, so I'm going to go over it because I don't think, it's been so long since this thing was enacted, I don't know if, how familiar everybody was with it. First of all, there would be a sworn complaint based on facts. It's not enough for someone to just sit there and point the finger and say, I think this person's doing this. You have to say, set forth facts and perhaps in affidavit form swearing to, you know, things that you know about. Within 21 days of the receipt of the complaint, the chair, the vice chair of the Ethics Commission would review this, and basically the chairman and the vice chairman and two people chosen at random by the city secretary would review it to determine whether or not the complaint's stated just cause for the existence of ethical conduct. If there was no just cause, the complaint would just be summarily dismissed. If there, however, if there was just cause, the committee review, there would actually be a hearing, the complainant would have the right to appear, the person who was complained against would have the right to put on evidence, cross-examine witnesses, and be represented by counsel. Within 45 days, the commission would make a decision, and that decision was to either dismiss or to find that there had been a violation. The grievance commission was advisory, and they would forward their findings or recommendations to the city manager or the city commission for discipline. And the discipline that would be meted out was either a letter of notification, and that was simply in the event of an innocent inadvertent violation of the ethics rules, a letter of admonition, a reprimand, a suspension from office, or any other remedy or penalty authorized by the code. In reviewing the ethics code, there were two things that I did notice. Number one is there were some inconsistencies with the law of the state of Texas, and I think it's okay to have some inconsistencies now if, in the event that the city wanted to have intentionally set a higher standard than the minimal standard set by the state. I mean, that certainly would be, that certainly would be fine. But there were certain inconsistencies, and I'll get into one of them, where we're actually setting a lesser standard or perhaps an inconsistent standard with the state. So I think if we, that's why I wouldn't recommend that the commission simply adopt the code that we had before without making some amendments and revisions to it. And the other thing is, the rules governing the city commission are extremely limited by the language that we have in the city charter. The charter doesn't provide for any measures in the event of misconduct by members of the commission. So in terms of the conflicts, I can talk to you about like the definition of substantial economic interest, that term. That's a very, very important term in the ethics codes because that's the triggering mechanism for certain disclosures, and it's a triggering mechanism for motions to abstain. Under state law, determination of a substantial economic interest, I can read this better State law, Chapter 572-005, talks about a substantial interest in terms of a person having a controlling interest in a business, owning more than 10% of the voting interest, owning more than $25,000 of fair market value, or have a direct or indirect participating interest of 10% of the profits, is a member of the board of directors, serves as an elected officer of the business, or is an employee of the business. If we look at the term substantial economic interest as defined by the old ethical code, it was defined by 10% of the stock, which is the same, or 15% or more of the fair market value of the company, which was slightly, a slight increase from the state law. However, one of the definitions was funds received from the business entity exceeded 10% of the person's gross income from the previous year. Obviously, if you're a very wealthy individual, it's going to be a lot easier to get by than someone that's making less money, so you could argue that the ethical standard should be the same, no matter how much money you're making. And then the last one was a substantial real estate and property if the interest is equitable or legal ownership with a fair market value of $2,500 or more. The city charter provision excluded being a member of the board of directors, being an elected officer of the business entity, or being an employee of the business entity. So there were some significant distinctions between those terms. If we look at another issue in terms of disciplinary action, under the Brownsville Code of Ethics, an employee who fails to comply with the chapter, who violates the chapter, may be disciplined in accordance with city personnel rules or regulations. But if we look at the provision for members of the commission, the Brownsville Code of Ethics states, if a city commission member fails to comply with this chapter or violates this chapter, their matter must be decided by the city commission in accordance with the city charter. That's fine, except the city charter doesn't address it. So we end up in a big circle where there's no enforcement mechanism for ethical conduct against members of the city commission under the old rule, all right? Other than maybe, you know, verbal admonitions, there was really nothing to back it up, which I don't think that's what this commission wants. All right. So in looking at this, I would make you the following recommendations. I'd ask that the city commission consider creation of an ad hoc committee, including members of the commission, the city attorney, the city manager, perhaps people from HR, to review the former Code of Ethics and to revise it consistently with state law and perhaps to bring it more into the current, and then to, they would draft a revised Code of Ethics which includes proposed amendments to the Brownsville City Charter relating to ethical rules governing the city commission. Those are my recommendations. I think that's a good starting point for the revision of the Code of Ethics by the city, and that concludes my PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sossen. Go ahead.
Another suggestion, since I'm all for the creation of an ad hoc committee, the only thing I would ask, and time-wise, would it be because we are about to, we're already in full swing with budget, and it is taking up staffs and management's and everybody's time, that such a committee would probably be created or brought upon right after we finish with budget, as to not interfere with the time of management and staff?
Anybody else? Let me just respond to that, Rick. I think that the staff or the city manager should dedicate his time to the budget at this particular time. I think the city attorney has sufficient assistance that if there be an ad hoc committee that we at least start a preliminary review by those commissioners, and I personally would like to be on that committee. I think we need to set the goal standard. We don't need to set minimum standards. We're progressing quite nicely, there's a lot of growth in this town, and so I think the more you emphasize the ability to trust the city and its employees and its commissioners and its government, the better off we are. So I don't know that we take any formal action other than I suggest that you get together with Estella, anybody who wishes to serve on that commission, please, you know, indicate by telling her that you wish to sit on that commission, and then that'll be a start, and then kind of we'll revise it with more staff as we go along. And it's going to take us a little while to get through this thing because there are a lot of things that are missing in the city charter, and quite frankly, there needs to be something in there that if it's something that the city attorney deems that it belongs in a law enforcement agency realm of decision, then it takes it out of our hands because we don't, as you well know, all the ramifications of trying to deal with that. It goes to the proper authorities, or the chief of police, or the district attorney, or, you know, whatever it is that we deem appropriate, and we don't want to get into that realm. So we have to be real careful about that.
That's correct.
Okay? Any other discussion?
I agree that the sooner we can do this the better because I know that a lot of the citizens in this city are concerned about this, and I feel that it would be best that we resolve this as soon as possible.
Well, and like I said, I think everybody's got a valid point. It just happens that this code, in order for it to be really effective, it takes a little bit of study.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we need to do it deliberately and, you know, totally all encompassing. Mark, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And your efforts. Appreciate it. Estella, we're-
Okay, we have executive session.
All right.
Item A, discussion with legal counsel pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code regarding threatened litigation.
We're going to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Estella, you ready?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Call the meeting to order. Go ahead, Estella.
We've called a meeting to order, Mayor, we need to do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Pastor Antwon Charles from St. James Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the leaders that are gathered here today, we thank you for those of the community that are gathered here today. We pray, Father God, that everything is done and said here in decency and in order, and, Father God, to promote the agenda of bettering the city for your people, keep us and guide us, and direct our paths, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item is action on item, it's discussed in executive session.
I advise counsel to continue in the path that was set forth already in this item, and to continue to report to us later at a later time with the status on.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion approved.
Proclamations, Marco Antonio Cabazos.
I think we've seen this young man in the paper today.
Come on up. Yes, I'm going to read.
Why don't you all stand right there while Commissioner Longoria reads the proclamation?
Mayor, I think our days are creeping up on us when children that you carried as babies are getting proclaimed at the city, so, but congratulations to you.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah. Congratulations to you, Mark, Mr. Seth, and congratulations also to you on the work, and marry to you, Matias, you know, the wonderful parents to this young man. Congratulations on raising such a wonderful, wonderful young man. The following is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Marco Antonio Cabazos. Whereas Marco Antonio Cabazos is a senior at Homer Hanna High School, a criminal justice student, and is a member of the student organization called Skills USA, which is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. And whereas Marco Antonio Cabazos is one of 10 students elected during the 2011 National Leadership and Skills in Kansas City, Missouri, to represent the United States, and whereas Marco Antonio Cabazos was during his sophomore year elected as a state, Texas state, Skills USA, and in March of 2010, he was elected as Skills USA historian to represent the state of Texas. And whereas Marco Antonio Cabazos in April 2011 was one of two students selected as a candidate from the state of Texas to represent our state at the national level. And whereas Marco Antonio Cabazos was in June 2011 elected a Skills USA national officer and will serve as a Region Four Vice President, becoming Hanna High School's first national officer in criminal justice with Skills USA. Now therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Marco Antonio Cabazos for his achievements in the Skills USA organization, and further, and further thank him for setting an example as a role model for our city's youth to emulate, done on this 19th day of July 2011, and it's signed Antonio Tony Martinez, Mayor, and the City Commission. Congratulations.
Congratulations, young man. Congratulations. Where are Bill Young?
He's on vacation.
Thank you.
Would you all like to say a couple of words?
First of all, I would like to thank especially all the city commissioners for the opportunity that I had today, and to the mayor, and to Mr. Ricardo Longoria for the opportunity that I have. And first of all, of course, I do this for myself to better myself as a student and a citizen of the community, but not only is to represent Brownsville because, yes, when the people ask me where I'm from, from Texas, but I'm proudly saying that I'm from Brownsville, Texas, and to represent not only me or my school, Homer Hanna, or the administration staff, but to represent us and the future leaders that we are, the students from this community. So thank you for this opportunity, and hopefully this inspires other students to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Consent agenda, item A.
I'll entertain a motion for consent item number eight.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Who was the second, I'm sorry?
Rick. Moved, and Jessica? Estella seconded.
Okay.
All right.
Item three, consideration and action to reappoint three members to the Civil Service Commission.
Mayor, members of the commissioners, I would ask that we defer this to a later meeting. We have a resignation here, so I want to-
I will entertain a motion to table this item.
Move. Second.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Gallon and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Colonel.
Item four, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2011-983-C, an ordinance concerning Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances and Title Utilities, and which provides for electric, water, and wastewater service rates and charges and conditions of services, amending Section 102-116 to provide for a 12-inch fire support connection to affix a monthly rate, to amend Section 102-196 to reinsert an omitted general service large demand customer classification description, to amend Sections 102 through 197, 102-199, 102-206, 102-207, 102-208, 102-214, and 102-221, to reassert omitted references to the general service large demand customer rate classification, including rates, and providing a severability cause and effective date.
Did that make sense? Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the commission. My name is Anna Lozano, and I am with the Brownsville P U B, and this item that we have before you for your consideration this afternoon pertains to two different sections in our existing rate ordinance, and the two separate requests in this one item relate to a water rate, a new water rate that we need, and then an existing commercial electric rate that we have. On the water side, we are requesting consideration and approval to add a new rate to the existing rates that we have for fire support services. The rate that we have for fire support services is a fixed monthly charge, and it's for water furnished to customers for fire protection purposes, which are like the fire sprinkler systems that commercial customers have. Now, the current language in our existing ordinance does specify rates for 4, 6, 8, and 10-inch connection services. However, we are currently working with a new customer, and they have a requirement for a 12-inch connection, and we don't have a rate for that. So we are asking that we insert language for a new rate for this 12-inch connection to meet their needs. I should say that the new rate that is being proposed today was developed in accordance with the American Water Works Association standards, and it's also in line with our existing rates. So all we're asking for is to add a rate for a 12-inch, so now we would have 4, 6, 8, 10, and 12-inch, and this is for fire support services. Yes?
How does this rate compare to other cities?
You know what, they did take data from all cities across, I think, from the American-
American Water Works Association.
Yeah, so it should be consistent, and it is in line with our other rates that we have right now. It's not, right now for an 8-inch, it's 49.58, and for a 10-inch, it's 89.16, so.
Our rates are very competitive with anybody in the Valley, as well as in Texas.
Yeah, definitely in the Valley.
The only thing, Commissioner, is that we now having some industries that are coming in here that are requiring a bigger line, and I think this is C K or-
It is C K technologies.
C K. And so we're just kind of coming up to speed on what it is that we need to be doing because I have a feeling if we are ever successful, there may be even later times where we're going to have even bigger connections that are going to be required.
Right.
It is a flat monthly fee, so there's no assumption otherwise for any reason they have to use a fire support.
Do we vote on this one separately from the other?
No, I just thought I would stop and see if anybody had any questions on the water side, but this connection for C K technology would be the largest one we have in our system right now, so. The second, the second item we have is in regards to an existing rate that we have on the electric side, it's a general service large demand rate. That rate was developed and approved back in 2005. It was implemented, it was inserted accordingly in the ordinance, it's been implemented, however, there were several sections in the ordinance where we inadvertently omitted the G S L D rates. So aside from the actual rate section in the ordinance that talks about the terms, the customers that qualify for the rates, there are other sections in the ordinance that tie back to or reference the G S L D, certain provisions, clauses, adjustments, penalties, and so we want to make sure that we're consistent. So the general service large demand rate is a published rate, and we just want to make sure that we flow through the entire ordinance and all of those provisions. The customers on the G S L D rate have the opportunity to apply for these provisions, and right now it's not in the ordinance. So we are asking to add the G S L D rate to all the different provisions that this, the rate ordinance has.
So it's not in the ordinance, but it's currently being charged?
No, the rate itself is in the ordinance, but there are other, like the customer-owned facilities discount is a discount offered to customers who choose to own their own facilities versus paying P U B to maintain them. Well, right now, the customer-owned facilities discount is only offered to general service demand and large industrial service rates, which are published rates. What we want to do is add the language to- rates, which are published rates. What we want to do is add the language to support the G S L D rate, so the customers on the G S L D rate can also take advantage of those discounts.
Does this show an increase in rate compared to what we are currently? Is there any increase in this whatsoever? I'm trying to get a better understanding.
Customers will not feel any type of, no, it's just actually language. They wouldn't feel any type of impact. Are there any other questions?
If we don't have any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
We have closed, closing.
Counsel, in 2005, I voted against that increase, but what she's saying is that this is just language that needs to be inserted in there, right? So, basically, I mean, I would hate to vote for something that I voted against back in 2005, because I was dead serious on that, and we didn't need that, that rate increase.
This was actually a new rate for a larger group of customers, and it actually, that group of customers actually benefits from this rate. No, it's for large, commercial customers.
So, we want to close public hearing first?
Should we have somebody?
I'm sorry. You have, does this have to do with this issue? No, this, this has nothing to do with residential. This has got the commercial, industrial. Well, but thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Motion to close public hearing. I hear a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay. Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Would you approve?
Thank you.
A motion to approve the rate and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, public comment. Consideration in action to acknowledge the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau Quarterly Report.
Feel like I'm back at school. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, general public. First of all, I'd like to congratulate, even though he's left and his family, Mr. Marco Antonio Cabazos. The fact that Ricardo Longoria, what an honor you placed on this young man, and he's very deserving. I'm excited, because Brownsville is in very good hands. So, my congratulations to Marco Antonio Cabazos. In front of you, you have a quarterly report. I'm not going to go through everything, or else we stay here for four hours. But I'll give you some highlights, some bad and some good, and I'll be more than happy to answer some questions. First page, in January through March, April through June, we place ads in the Texas Monthly, TexasTraveler.com. We have billboards in the San Antonio market, Houston market, and the billboards are electronic, so they, they're always up there, and they're beautiful. We also have TourTexas.com email blast and banner advertisements, and a U S S A Sports Magazine, we have an insert. And then, and the direct response that we have from these publications, this past month, we had 5,091 direct mailouts. That means to a person's house. For the year, we have 16,831 direct mailouts that we have sent to a person's home. The walk-in traffic to the visitor center this past month has been 1,187, for a year total of 6,287. We are way, way down as far as walk-ins are concerned. One of the things we figured out that a lot of the Mexican visitors are not coming across, and they would be the ones that would normally come by, ask for directions, and the other drop-off are winter Texans. So, those are the areas that we're lacking. One of the items that we started promoting a lot is our webpage. We've added a bird hotspots, a list of historical and family attractions. We've updated the hotels and motels information. We've included banners for the farmer's market, the Holiday Village, Ario Mexico. And we've also added, at the very end, we've added something that's very important. Commissioner Samora brought something up a couple of years ago. And this is towards the end of your package. But we now have a survey online, and people are actually responding. So we're going to start getting a feel for what they're looking for. For example, have you visited Brownsville? Forty-three point four percent of the people said yes, fifty-six point six said no. Next question, are you thinking about visiting Brownsville? Fifty-nine point five said yes, and twenty-nine point four said maybe. So we're going after those twenty-nine point four. Says, what type of information do you need? Forty percent said they needed information on activities. Forty percent said on major attractions. Forty percent said airline serving Brownsville. Says, which of these essential elements will influence your visit to Brownsville? Weather was seventy-five percent. Affordability, seventy-five percent. And hotel options, fifty percent. Well, one of our key words on our slogan is friendly, historical, and affordable. And if you notice, seventy-five percent of the people answering said that that's one of their criteria. How did you hear about Brownsville? From a friend or a relative, fifty-nine point four percent. That's why I always say to you all, and I say to the general public, you, you and me, we're all salesmen, salespeople for Brownsville. Whatever we say about Brownsville, we either sold it, or we have someone not wanting to come here. Right there is tells us, a friend or relatives is how they decide where to go. The next one was internet, fifteen point nine. I'm glad to say that I'm about to hire a communication director at the Bureau. And their main emphasis will be the internet, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. We don't, we're not up to date. Commissioner Samora was bringing that up the last couple of times, and you know what? You were right on, Commissioner. So we're going to bring someone on to work with the internet. What was the purpose of your last visit? Leisure, forty-six point two percent. Man, we have everything these people want as far as leisure is concerned, so we're right on track. Thirty point eight said, visit relatives or friends. Once again, when someone comes into Brownsville, although they're family members, how we treat them while they're here. What we have to offer while they're here will determine whether they're going to sell Brownsville for us to someone else in the future. What method of transportation did you use to arrive to Brownsville? Forty-six point two said they used airplane, an airplane. Forty-six point two said automobile. So the fact that we're adding Ario Mexico is fantastic. That should increase the number of people we have visiting. What type of accommodation did you use? Fifty-five point six said home of a friend or a relative. Once again, it goes back to friends and relatives. Once again, that involves each and every one of us selling Brownsville. Twenty-two point two had a hotel or motel rental. How long was your stay? Less than one week, fifty-five point six. That's the market we're looking for. Two to three days, hopefully four days. But two to three days is really what we're looking for. What are your favorite attractions in Brownsville? Gladys Porter Zoo, sixty-one point five. So what Dr. Birchfield and his staff have been saying, they're right on, sixty-one point five. South Padre Island, forty-six point two. People ask me, why do you always put a starfish? Why do you always mention the island? We're a region. We need to promote the island because people are going to go to the island. And if they don't stay here, they're going to come and shop and eat here, thus helping us in sales taxes. Twenty-three point one for museums, sporting events. Forty-six point two, border culture. They just want to come and visit the way we are, the way we live. What are your favorite attractions? Are you ready? Thirty point eight, shopping. That's why we work in cooperation with Sunrise Mall, and you'll see an ad in your booklet, where we did a co-op for the Sunrise Mall coupon book. Overall rating for your first visit of Brownsville? Sixty-one point five said excellent. Now you might say, oh, it was only one or two persons or three. It doesn't matter, the ones that are answering the polls are saying, we like it. So we're on the right track, ladies and gentlemen. Based on your last visit, how likely is it that you will visit Brownsville again? Seventy-six point nine said likely. So we're on the right track, ladies and gentlemen. We've got something good going, we need to continue it. What are the emphasis of the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau? We're emphasizing athletic events. Why? When I first went to work for the Bureau, the hotels, motel said that they needed people during the weekends, Thursday through Sunday. The sports park was just about being completed, so it was almost perfect timing. What have we done at the sports park? We have helped bring in USSA Youth State Baseball Qualifier. We brought in for the first time from San Antonio, Texas, the UIL 5A State Boys and Girls Regional Soccer Tournament. In April, we also had another USSA State Qualifier. A Guinness's World Record Zumba Dance Competition or Class, which promoted Brownsville all over the world. A World Fishing Guinness's World Record. Also putting Brownsville on the map on a different frame of mind. And why am I emphasizing this? Because here you have two commissioners that are up there. Not just talking the talk, but walking the walk, walking the walk. You all are setting the example for the rest of the citizen. And you know what? We're going to follow right along. We need to keep doing this type, these type of events. Also in April, we had Nations Youth Baseball Tournament. In May, we had a USSA State Baseball Tournament. You notice, state, state, state. That means we're bringing in people from out of town. I'm happy to say that in June, we also had a youth baseball tournament and a national youth, two youth baseball tournaments. What does this do? This brings in people to stay in our hotels for two to three days. I am proudly wearing a shirt right now, and Mayor, I think you got a letter, it's in a brown envelope, from the Pan American Golf Association for Brownsville, hosting the fifty-fourth National Pan American Golf Association Conference in Brownsville. We're expecting anywhere between thirteen to fifteen hundred people in Brownsville. And I am wearing one of their shirts, and I'm proud to be wearing it because the CVB was there with them. We were there to help them talk and help them win the vote, and we did it. This Thursday, at the sports park, we will have the first World Series. Key word, World Series for nine and under at the sports park. Teams from New York City, teams, a team from Georgia, a team from Puerto Rico will be here this weekend. And if you read the article in the Brownsville Herald this past weekend, it's right here, it says that my goal, as a CVB Director for the city of Brownsville, is that we have the opportunity to make history. We won fifty teams from all over the world within three years. So that way, everyone will know where Brownsville is. This is the first. They also have ten through twelve-year-olds, fourteen through sixteen-year-olds. You understand the golden opportunity we have? And as I told these, the people involved in this tournament, we have an opportunity to showcase Brownsville. And that way, they can go back and sell Brownsville for us to the other entities. Ario Mexico was here this past couple of weeks. I dealt with some of the regional sales director, what have you. I drove them over around. We talked about opportunities. And one of the opportunities we talked about is bringing in sports team from Mexico, where the athletes have a little bit better discounted rate. So that way, they have an opportunity to go Brownsville. So now, we can talk again, not only a regular citizen coming from Mexico, but athletes. And you know the athletes, the soccer teams and the baseball team in Mexico? They have their fans, they are fanáticos, they will travel. So once again, we're looking at another golden opportunity. I'm excited about where we're at. I'm excited about people like these that will speak about the good things of Brownsville. I'm excited about what you all are doing up there and supporting the efforts of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. But there is still a lot of work to do. Not everything is hunky-dory. We are not meeting the figures we met in 2006, 2007, when everything was real good. We had great sales tax receipts and what have you. We're not close to that. But do we cry about it? No, we have opportunities to bring people to Brownsville. And now, I will entertain any question because I could go on and on because I'm excited, I'm excited. So would anybody like to ask anything?
I always do when it comes to marketing and tourism. I have a few comments. I know that these are tough economic times, and one of the first things to go with governmental entities is marketing, marketing budgets. So I want to know if you're taking advantage of co-op opportunities when it comes to advertising in some of these larger markets? Co-ops with the state tourism office, I know those are available, and even co-ops with South Padre Island?
We have, with the state, as a matter of fact, it's funny that you asked that, but I do have data on how to get on a co-op with it. We have not taken advantage. We have not. And as far as working with the CVB, yes, this sporting opportunity. I met with Dan Quant and Mr. Carlos Gutierrez for Ario Mexico last week. And we talked about bringing fishing tournaments. They have a fishing tournament on the island scheduled for the next few months. And we're going to do a co-op where we can help Brownsville and South Padre Island work together. So I'm working in cooperation with Dan Quant, and you know, you can always verify that, so. But something new is the state funding a co-op, is something that I'm learning about and taking advantage. And next time I report to you, the last quarter, I should have something in hand in front of you that I am trying to get. Yes, ma'am.
And how's it going with utilization of the Infotrac program to get out leads to all the hoteliers so that we can provide competitive rates to our guests?
The Infotrac, when we first started, they, we didn't use it accordingly. We did train, but I did not learn it as well as I should have, so I'm a little bit behind that. So we asked for more training, and John Paradiso people are going to be coming down. Sorry, I didn't pick up on it well.
Okay, and then just one more comment. I'm working with the United Brownsville Group to put together a cross-marketing program or committee because there seems to be a disconnect when it comes to promoting each other's activities, events. For example, we don't exactly know what's going on at the port. We may not know what's going on at BISD and their events. And by the time we do know, it's the day of the event, and we can't cross-market. So how can we get together so that we can cross-market, do integrated marketing, so that there's one concerted effort to promote Brownsville and to take best advantage of each other's marketing efforts?
Well, that's a very good point. We feel proud at the Convention Visitors Bureau that we do have a concerted effort where we put out the word that anybody that would like to advertise an event, as long as it's available to the general public, it's not a private event. What we do, we do ask them to write, give us a write-up. We'll post it on our webpage, we'll post it on our calendar events. And we have a lot of good people that have done that. Children's Museum, the farmer's market is up there, the Fine Arts Museum, et cetera, et cetera. And if necessary, I'll go make a presentation to BISD just to remind them that where they're available for them. But I'm proud of our webpage, we do have a lot of articles there and events posted. But it's never enough.
Bean, before you leave, just a couple of observations. I think the city manager and I were in an airport over the weekend, and there was a visitors and convention kiosk in an airport. You might want to consider that, get together with Larry that's sitting back there and try to figure out. It was a very small one, but it's a promotional deal. Also, last time at Public Forum, there were some people that were commenting with regards to the plastic ban, plastic bag ban, and how maybe some visitors to our area do not know that that exists. You might suggest trying to figure out the college has got, you know, bags that they're giving away. There's different organizations, there's different businesses that I know of have shopping bags that, you know, that are reusable that you might inquire about so that, you know, and people who might see someone who's upset because they don't have any bags. You know, we might, just what you say is be an ambassador of Brownsville and say, you know what? I've got some bags from wherever the source may be, so that we can kind of keep people happy. Might be a suggestion. You've got to realize that the city of South Padre is also going to ban plastic bags. So with this flight from Mexico, where the people are coming either here or South Padre Island, you might want to get together with them and perhaps maybe at your kiosk, have South Padre also dedicate some of their resources to getting those bags and instruct those people that we have that in place, and it's going to stay in place. And so, you know, how can we help and make your stay a little better, okay?
Sounds like a great idea, Mayor.
Anybody have anything else?
Are we doing anything to advertise in Mexico, any region in Mexico?
We place, we place some small ads in Monterrey Norte and Tampico. And we're going to increase it because of Ario Mexico, and we're going to start advertising more. Yes, ma'am. We had a very, two years ago, two, three, two and three years ago, we had $48,000 that we would invest. And then when the situation got a little bad, we held back. And now that there's an opportunity again, we're going to increase it.
And Commissioner, just so you know, part of the arrangements we had with Ario Mexico, they were, they were to take care of all the promotional stuff in Monterrey. And they actually did a very good job. And obviously, it shows because I think now Larry, we're filled up through the first part of September. And again, they were wonderful when we went over there to Monterrey. There, it's an exciting, an exciting time in that regard. And I think it is a golden opportunity for the convention center to take advantage and make sure that they feel welcome when they're coming into that airport.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? This is an action item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you, Bean.
Item number seven, consideration in action on a Fly Brownsville travel policy for United Brownsville. For United Brownsville.
Mayor Martinez, city commissioners, as you recall, we discussed this during the executive, during the workshop session we had. But if I could, I'd just like to review with you very briefly. The, this is the city of Brownsville air travel policy. The key points to it, first of all, all approved air travel must originate from the Brownsville-South Padre International Airport that pertains to city employees. All United Brownsville members are encouraged to also use the Brownsville-South Padre International Airport for their travel needs. American Airlines, Aeroméxico Airlines, Continental Airlines, and United Airlines fly to more than 1,000 destinations worldwide. There's no reason to use another airport. When traveling on American Airlines, city Brownsville employees are hereby required to enter the city's business extra number, 799925, when making their reservations. Employees of the city of Brownsville and members of United Brownsville are encouraged to enter their personal American Airlines Advantage number when traveling. The number is free and available at www.a-a.com or via the airport's website at www.flybrownsville.com. Employees can earn free travel and other benefits. Employees can earn free travel and other benefits. Employees who are members of Aeroméxico's Premier Club, Continental One Pass, and United Mileage Plus are encouraged to enter their personal numbers when traveling on company business. Employees should pay close attention when making reservations to choose the most efficient flight that serves the city's purpose for travel. By selecting a different flight on a different day or at a different time, this action can result in great cost savings and more efficient use of the employee's time. Finally, an employee can achieve the greatest savings by using the individual airline's website when purchasing tickets. Each airline guarantees the lowest fare anywhere. All airlines' websites are available at www.flybrownsville.com. Adopted at City Commission meeting on July ninth, 2011. Also, to follow up on what was discussed during the workshop session, we'll be happy to put together a proposed action whereby we can establish an air travel organization, you will, you know, whether it be at the airport department or appropriate place, so that city employees and perhaps members of United Brownsville will have the opportunity to have people who are experts be able to book flights at the earliest possible time and at the cheapest possible cost savings.
I would appreciate that. I think that would be very good for the city. This is also an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Item eight, consideration in action to adopt Resolution Number 2011-046 to authorize the filing of a grant application and execution of grant agreements with the Federal Transit Administration for Brownsville Urban System Operations and Maintenance Facility Rehabilitation
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Recognizing that there is, there are assets that have exceeded their useful life at the existing bus operations and maintenance facility, federal financial assistance under the FTA State of Good Repair Bus and Bus Facility Initiatives, we will be requesting to replace or improve conditions of these assets. Proposed activities include replacing the roofing, siding, and structure components of two buildings, replacing and enclosing the bus washer, repairing and rehabbing the parking and circulation area pavement, and rehabbing the storm water conveyance and retention system. The estimated total cost for this project is one point six million. The department is requesting federal assistance in the amount of one point two. If awarded, the city will be required to provide a local share of at least twenty percent or three hundred and twenty-one thousand. This is a competitive application that we apply, that we're applying for.
Would you approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consideration in action to adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2011-047 to amend the General Fund for various expenditures and to provide additional cash transfer to the airport fund.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is a budget amendment that will allocate some funds to various line items, and this is some expenditures that have already been approved by the City Commission. All we're doing is housekeeping, so we can set up a budget for that particular line item. And United Brownsville Consulting, that was for the Pen Box contract that we are sharing with other entities. We also have the tourist contribution. This is about a six years equivalent, one hundred and thirteen thousand, it's about a six years, and that's where the tourist located on the, on the west Brownsville side, along Laredo Road. And the other one is the settlement that we settled recently. And then we also asking for a transfer from the General Fund of eight hundred thousand. And this is just a budget amendment that we recommend that it be adopted.
Any questions, or feet? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. We have all ayes except for Commissioner Samoto, who votes nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Item number ten, consideration in action to adopt Resolution Number 2011-048 to express official intent to reimburse costs incurred to acquire kennels and vehicles for the animal shelter, ambulances, golf course equipment, and vehicles and equipment for various other city departments.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the City Commission, this is a, what we call a reimbursement resolution. We were trying to find ways of how to improve our fund balance in the General Fund. When we were in Dallas, we discovered that there's a possibility that we may have another refunding issue sometime in October, whereby we would reconstruct some of our debt, and we would be able to obviously reduce our annual payments, and in so doing, we could include some expenditures that have already been approved by the City Commission, but money has not been spent yet. And this reimbursement resolution will allow us to reimburse the General Fund was the certificate's obligation are issued. So this is something that would assist the General Fund fund balance during the fiscal year 2011. And again, we're recommending that, that you approve this reimbursement resolution.
Does everybody understand the resolution? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay. Moving, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consideration in action to authorize city manager to accept grant number SAT 01-1041-12 from the Texas Auto Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority for the South Texas Auto Theft Enforcement Task Force Project for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of one million forty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars for Brownsville Police Department's share of five hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Mayor, members of City Commission, good evening. The City of Brownsville hacking is the grantee for six different entities that include the City of Brownsville, City of McAllen, City of Far, the Cameron County Texas Sisters Office, the City of Edinburgh, and the Cameron County District Attorney's Office, has been awarded this grant in the, in the amount of a million forty-three three thirty-six by the Texas Automobile Burglary and Prevention Authority. The Brownsville's share of the grant is four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. This would be our nineteenth year of funding that we would be receiving from it be GPA.
Yeah. Good work. Do I hear a motion for approval? Okay. Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration in action to award a work task order number one, CH2M Hill for Aviation Engineering Services.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, the top recommendation is to award a work order task, task order number one to CH2M Hill of Eaglewood, Colorado, for Aviation Engineering Services in the amount of one million fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Funding for these services are contingent upon approval from the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, and the administration of the Brownsville Airport Department concurs with this recommendation. There was a tie point there.
Any discussion, Commissioner?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
It says Larry Brown submitted a request to this particular company. I don't see anything about an RFP or RFQ.
Okay. There's a recap as part of the analysis that is, if you can scroll down. No, I'm sorry, scroll up on the analysis. There you go. On May the fourth, 2010, the Brownsville City Commission awarded a term contract for airport architectural and engineering consulting services to CH2M Hill of Eaglewood, Colorado. And this is basically the first work order that CH2M Hill is gonna do for the airport. But yes, this, to answer your question, there was an agenda that was presented and submitted on May the fourth of last year to award a contract to this company.
Okay. And at that point, was there other firms that were looked at, or is that, is that what it would be, Mr. Larry?
We went to the process of the SOQs. We qualified companies, and they were the highest ranked firm. So therefore, we negotiated with them.
There were thirteen companies that submitted proposals. We followed the FAA's process to rank them.
I'm sorry?
Was it, did it go through the bidding process?
Yes, ma'am.
Proposal process, competitive process.
I'm sorry?
We went through the SOQ process, terms of qualifications.
Can you explain that?
Basically, what we're doing is following the FAA's requirements, because this is gonna be a hundred percent funded by the FAA.
And that involves us sending out requests for proposals. We receive those proposals from the various different engineering firms that may be qualified and competent and able to do the type of work we're talking about at an airport. A committee is set up that reviews those various different proposals and basically goes through a ranking process and narrows the proposals down to, say, the top three. Once they're narrowed down to the top three proposals, we then invite those top three firms to submit to us their cost statements. Once the cost statements are submitted, we can then review such things as, you know, a comparison between the three firms. The three top firms were CH2M Hill, URS, and also the previous firm, which was HNTB. Those, all three of those firms are competent and capable to do the type of work we're talking about. But based upon CH2M Hill's presentation, the type of experience and competency they've got to do this type of work, they ranked a little bit higher than the others. That ranking was what ended up in the recommendation coming before the City Commission, that the City Commission acted on. What we have to do, though, before they can actually do any work, before they enter into a contract, a work task order, we have to be in a position with the FAA to potentially apply for and receive the grant funding. The reason why it's coming now has to do with the fact that Congress has not yet approved a final FAA Administration bill, and so it's been approved in sort of pieces. So we're only now at a position where we can apply for the funding to actually do these projects in terms of the engineering. And the way it works, first, we do the engineering work associated with the project. Then, once we're in a position with the engineering plans, we don't just take them and set them on the shelf, but what we do then, is the way the FAA works, we will advertise based upon the potential revenue that we could get from the FAA. We advertise, we submit the actual contract, potential contract value to the FAA with a grant application. The FAA then approves the grant application. We finally award the contract, we do the project. The reason this is important is because periodically, the FAA, if you're in good standing with the FAA, and you're getting your projects done, they will have not only entitlement money, but discretionary money as well. By doing this correctly and following the FAA standards, you increase your odds of getting discretionary money. An example of that is when the City Brownsville received fourteen million dollars in grant funds and rebuilt taxiway G. That's what we're gearing up to do. Okay?
Any more questions, girls? Come on.
Okay.
Very good.
Understood. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Robert, go ahead, next one.
Item thirteen, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an air conditioning compressor replacement for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Okay. This recommendation is basically due to the fact that the airport, they've been having a lot of issues with the AC. Therefore, since it is an emergency, we requested a quote from the BIBO. The BIBO, it's an entity that we can use as a, it is under the cooperative network for purchasing, and it's been used by different entities, school districts, and so forth. So going back to this, the recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an air conditioning compressor for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport to McWay Air Conditioning of San Antonio, Texas. It is in the amount of forty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. This procurement reflects BIBO contracting pricing and the funding it's, for this procurement, it's available from account fifty-three dash eighty-six, three four dash ninety-two ninety dash nine forty-two, and the administration of the airport department concurs with this recommendation.
Any questions, Commissioners? I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Rick, it's your turn. Motion for adjournment. Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Meeting adjourned. There you go.